Please join me.
I'll read. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, evening folks. Hopefully you all had a good holiday weekend. This is the May twenty seventh meeting of the town of Canada. Planning Board, uh, let me. For my exercise, get through, make sure I know everybody. Introduce you, Kim Burkard, who's our. Facilities Coordinator, as far as road access, Dan Berkowski, who is active this evening. Uh, due to Amanda Van Lathan being excused. Uh, we have Tim Schneider, board member. And Mark Tolbert, board member, Bob Lecour, board member, I'm Chuck Boyler. Chairman. Kristen Smith is our, is our zoning officer. And Eric Cooper, representing MRB. And online is our attorney, Chris Nadler.
Good evening.
Uh, we're gonna go through the agendas published. I guess the good news is the agenda has gotten shorter as, as time goes on. It's good for tonight, but bad for the future. But we will follow the agenda and. Get into it in just a second, but the first item. Business is the privilege of the floor. Is anyone here? Uh, here, have to be here, they're not in remote lands, uh, want to address the board regarding item that is not on the agenda. If. If not, we will, as promised, move on to the agenda. Uh, I should first state that the Daily Messenger on five twenty. Published the, all the hearings that were advertised for this evening. So they were duly posted. And I'm sure you saw them as you're reading the legal notices in the Daily Messenger. Okay, item number one is CPN twenty twenty four. One seventeen, it's the. Peabody, Nixon Peabody, uh, application regarding the cell tower over on County Route Eight. It's a continued, continued, continued site plan and special use. Permit, uh, for seventy seven acre parcel. In the AR two zoning district and as just, as I said, a continuation of. Hearings we've had in the past. Uh, Chris, maybe, uh, you can bring us up to date as to. Where we stand with the application.
Uh, my understanding is that the applicant is. Uh, working on a fourth. Design option. Uh, that I believe the planning board, uh, is in favor of. They will be submitting a new application because it's on a different piece of property. Will need to have a new public hearing. Uh, and referrals to county planning board, et cetera. Um, and then the board will. Hear that. Application like any other. Um, and, and make a decision on that. I don't know exactly what their timeframe is. To submit a, uh, the revised application or a new application. Um, but I wouldn't imagine it'll take much longer.
Okay, uh, we did, uh, receive a letter from the applicant's attorney. Um, asking to continue the hearing until the July eighth meeting. Of this board. And in the same letter, they extended the shot clock. To July ninth. Um. Is. Is it being it's on an, another property and. Being is almost a new application. I, I'm thinking, we'll have to go through PRC and. Close ones and close ones.
That's what Chris just said, right?
It, it will be a different, a, a new, a separate application.
Okay.
I, I don't see where it needs to go to PRC since all the. Essentially, the PRC work has been done. Um.
Well, you, you mentioned, you mentioned referrals.
I do have PRC, this is matter, maintain the process.
Sure.
Yeah. So I could, I could see it possibly being on the, uh. July. PRC. I think it'd be a little soon.
I, so my question is, so. So our understanding anyways is that they'll be submitting a new application for the fourth. Version, but right now they're asking a continuation of this site plan application. Or. The other parcel, is that just.
They're not mutually exclusive.
Right, so then.
They're, they're legally entitled to maintain both applications at this simultaneously. Because there are these.
Didn't we have a, an approval on the last one? On site three?
Not completely, no.
They were coming back with a final drawing. Of site. Free when site four came up.
Okay, well, then we, we would continue the, uh. Public hearing, uh, regarding the current application and possibly. We're see a subsequent application. For the other property. Is that correct?
Ex. Exactly.
Okay, so, uh.
At some, at some point in time, the. Previous application will be withdrawn, correct?
I would assume any approval of any application. Or the other application will be withdrawn, whichever one is. Right, it's acted upon.
Yeah, well, that's well said, Chuck, but right now. Option four is. In theory, oh. You know, I brought it to this board. Uh, beyond that, we have no. Specifics, they're entitled not to submit an applic- an applicant for. Or and proceed on. Their first three options, but. You know, we anticipate that they will submit an option for application. At which point. Application or the other will have to be withdrawn. Uh, prior to approval of either.
Okay. All right, uh, before we act on the continuation, sir, do you, you want to address the board at all? Are you? Are you familiar somewhat what's happening?
So Mark Delweiler, twenty twenty nine, County Road Eight, having done this enough times, um, I'm not familiar, I am curious, I, I'll ask, I, I realize maybe you don't have any answer. A fourth. Option away from the County Road Eight property or. Further, uh, south than the County Road Eight property? Do we have any idea?
I think what they're proposing is a. Uh, in, you know, the wooded area in the back.
Like. Close to the power lines?
Further away.
Like further south.
It's south, it's south, it's the next property south.
There's the wooded property and then there's empty farmland to the south of that.
So the owner of that farmland purchased.
Yes.
The farm.
Yes, I'm, I know that.
So the wood lot. That's just south of where the current application is.
Right, there's.
Is the proposed new location number four in the wood lot.
In the wood lot?
In the wood lot.
Oh, okay. Well. I appreciate the clarity, I don't have any.
Okay.
Honestly, I just came to listen to the discussion to make sure it was consistent with the last one, but it sounds like I'll submit a foil request and I'll learn it from there.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
All right, thanks for coming out. Okay, so I will take a motion to continue. The current application, I had to request the applicant to. July eighth.
I'll make that motion, Chuck, CPN twenty four one and seven, continuations of July eight. Second.
Okay, got a motion a second for the discussion, anybody else? In the audience regarding. If not, all in favor?
I.
Those. Is mission carry, so it's, uh. It put off to the earliest July.
Thank you.
Can I point out to that? Gentleman that. A foil request won't, won't have any, uh, results right now. They haven't submitted a new application, so the town.
Oh, fair enough.
Response, would we be, we don't have any app, uh, materials responsive to your request. At this point.
Fair enough.
You may want to wait a couple of weeks before you submit that foil.
That makes sense, all right, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, next we have an extension request, the second ninety day extension. Uh, from Mahar Engineering for a property of fifty five, seventy five, routes five and twenty. Uh, this is their second request, uh, the current. First request expires, uh, expired yesterday, I believe it was twenty six, it has twenty fourth on the.
Yeah.
But I think it was the twenty sixth, based on the resolution we had passed. About ninety days ago, so, um. Is someone here representing Mahar or? The applicant? As I did have a question. Regarding. How they're making out, why, why they needed ninety, another ninety days and. Uh, what's their holdup? Uh, okay. Do we want to go and grant the extension without a clarification or a reason for? The extension request? And if we don't, then. It's expired. And this is just for the site plan, right?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, the subdivision. Has been. Signed and filed, okay.
It says in the messages that, um, construction costs and contractor availability, um. That's what they're working through.
That was the last extension as well.
All right.
And we generally have a practice of. Needing feedback of some time before we. Go through this number of extensions.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I, I think. We just don't. Lately. Grant extensions unless there's justification and usually there's a. Form they fill out. Uh, request form for extensions and. Didn't see that. So I, I think that being said, uh. I think we hold all of them, granting the extension. Uh, not that we. Declare this expired, but, uh, ask. Guess staff to, uh, check with the applicant. We need a justification for the, uh.
Since it's expired right now, we just draft a continuation resolution on the request for. A ninety day extension, have we heard at the next meeting or something like that?
Uh.
Exactly.
A continuation of the extension, okay.
A continuation of the request.
Okay. All right. Does that sound good to the board?
Yeah, that's a new one.
We're always blazing new trails. Uh, okay, any further discussion, someone want to give me a continuation on the extension?
This debut will make two aside, just the first meeting in June?
Uh, June tenth, yep. So moved. Second. Okay, for the discussion. Not all favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, takes care of that one. All right, now we get on to CPN twenty twenty four, one twenty seven. Uh, this is, uh, PJ Partners, Paul Messina. Uh, this is in relation to the site plan. For the, uh. Placement of the stone, the catch basin culvert. Uh, that exists, uh, in a non-regulated drainage way to control erosion and sediment. On a residential lot in the RLD at fifty forty one. County Route sixteen. Uh, Mr. Messina?
Yes.
Good to see you this evening, see you, Mr. Thornton, good to see you, Glenn, good to see you. Hello.
Hi.
Um. So would someone please like to tell us a little bit about your. What I guess has happened in the past tense?
Well. There's an existing. Culvert in, in stone that was placed and per that is on my neighbor's property and we weren't able to get. Re- reach an agreement on how to address it, so I'm going to restore. That side of the, the property and go ahead with just a control on my side.
And, and why was this, why was this work needed to the? Former, the, you just seem like.
The county changed, the county changed the distribution box on the other side of the road and it increased the flow through that drain. Um, significantly. I contacted the county. And they, they. Rested up within the right of way and then said the rest of it was up to me and I did not need a permit. Which is, oh, I got started on this and.
From them?
Yes.
Okay, that was the reason for the, uh. Remediation, okay, uh. Open it up to the board, do you understand? What?
I was out there today.
Okay.
Knock on your door, nobody answered, but I just went around, down back and around and looked at that. Um. And your idea is to put some kind of block because that culvert is aimed direct towards your property, right, where you want to put it?
Well, that's, um. Yep. This is the county culvert. If you saw a black culvert, it's, and my plan is, is to remove that. Um, I put it in. But part of it's on my neighbor's property and they don't want it there, so I'm going to take it out. And, uh, take the stone out. And then just do some stone on my side.
Cause this, and what I saw was the water's flowing, but it's not going through this big, big culvert.
Right, that's, that was the plan.
Uh.
The culvert's really for overflow situation.
Oh.
And it works beautifully.
Yeah. But it looks like it aimed direct to your property.
Um, that's, that's the way it looks, uh, plan was we were going to do more downstream riprap this year. Um, until. Um. We had to change the plan.
So just so I understand, the intent is to. Uh, take that pipe up and then continue with the stone like you have on your side. And to continue that down with something like that, so.
Um. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Paul got in some trouble with the neighbor, I mean, the work was done.
This is Glenn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Glenn Thornton, Thornton Engineering, I drew up the plan. Uh, so, uh. Paul had a contractor come out, place a thirty six inch diameter. Smooth interior plastic culvert pipe. Across, kind of following the drainage way as best he could, uh, to direct the water back onto his property downstream. Of his garage that you see there, there was serious erosion in the channel incising. And he just wanted to protect his, his garage, so he placed a culvert. The neighbor doesn't like that, so the game plan now is to remove everything placed on the neighbor's property. The pipe. The stone backfill around the pipe, some, some cobble and some light stone fill and some, some heavier stone fill placed below the pipe. Remove all that. Restore his property the way it was before the pipe was installed, which means bare dirt. I mean, it was eroding, but it was bare dirt, so. There will be no improvements on the neighbor's property and what you see there in the shading is going to be medium stone fill, bank protection. Towed into the, uh, the channel on the Messina property to only protect the Messina property, there will still be erosion on the neighbor's property, but with the. The depth of the stone fill at the toe of that protection, it won't erode away the stone on the Messina property, that will remain. Uh, during construction, the only game plan to control sediment would be a single check dam. Downstream of the, the work area. Uh, of course, it'll be done in dry weather conditions when there's no storms proposed or in the forecast, so. Hopefully, we can get the work done quickly and get the stone on the Messina property installed. Uh, before we have a rain event, but even with a rain event, you never see a lot of water through that culvert unless it's a, a more extreme, a heavy localized. Rain event, and as Paul said, yeah, the, the county did make some changes, um. Basically, what is that, old? Westlake Road, it's, it's up there, they made some improvements up there and, um, it, it does. I don't want to say discharge more water, but the water has an easier time, there's no detention upstream that flows straight through onto the, uh. The Messina property and the neighbor's property. And again, there, there is erosion downstream all the way to the lake, I, I think. Uh, what Paul proposed here and had built would, would help control the erosion and. The sediment from reaching the lake because really between the two pipes, it created a, a depression to kind of slow the water down. And a lot of the water does just drain through the stone before it even gets to the pipe, but in any event. That's all being removed, we'll restore the neighbor's property to reconstruction conditions and do our best to protect. The, uh, Messina property with the, uh, the riprap and the stream bed. Okay, uh, can we go to the original plan that showed the. Showed the pipe, I think that showed a little more detail in terms of contours and. This latest plan is based upon a, uh. A field surveyor, you came out, a new survey came out and located everything very accurately. Okay, this was the plan. That you were planning to do originally with the pipe, but. And the, uh, plunge pool in front of the. It was the plan that was originally proposed, but had already been built. By the time. The plan was submitted to the planning board, as Paul said, he talked to the county. And he understood a permit wasn't required, he didn't realize that the proximity to the lake required. The, uh, uh, approval from the planning board for the work. So that's. What, at that time, are best guess based upon field measurements of what had been built and the amount of disturbed area. Since then, though, a, a surveyor had come out and surveyed the site, and this plan is quite accurate, but it's, doesn't matter because everything's been removed. Well, it does have details that your, the other plan does not have, including contours and. Uh. I, I think that. The thing that makes, makes me nervous, I'm sure makes the board nervous. You keep saying it's, it's going to be erosion, but we'll control it, uh. We, we try to minimize that as much as possible. We're, we're trying to control on the Messina property. We can't do anything on the neighbor's. Oh, no, I, I, I realize that. It's, but I guess I'm saying, is there more that can be done on the Messina property? To convey the water? Yeah, I mean, I, I. Other than looking like a. An elbow, that's about all I get out of that plan.
There's, there's cross sections.
Yeah, up and tap, there's the section upper right. That would be looking towards, uh. Westlake Road.
Upstream, yes.
Chuck, does the D E C chime in on these at all because it's on the creek? Or it's flowing, it's not a creek, it's not.
It's, it's not regulated.
Yeah, it's not a blue line or anything like that, but.
Uh. I'm excited, well, do you know, Eric, if. Is it under D E C regulation?
It's not, that's why, that's why I asked the county.
Okay. It's essentially a pipe outfall. Um, and it go very steep. And the, you know, the pitch, the slope of the hill certainly adds to the potential for erosion. Eric, I know it, on your review, and I don't know, Glenn, if you saw MRB's review or not, I know it came up. Fairly recently, uh, the twenty third. You had a number of items that, uh. You felt should be addressed. You want to?
Sure.
Over those?
I think the biggest one you touched on. Uh, related to showing contours, um. Any existing vegetated ground, some of that stuff is shown on the previous plan. But not on the one that was revised and was, you know, under review by the boards and many. So the biggest thing for us being able to review. That, and that also has for some language modeling, so just to understand. How it proposed. All the improvements, all they will do. Makes me trying to bring that back to a previous.
Are you kidding me, really, that was one of the comments, I'm sorry, I mean, stream modeling, there's this thirty six inch culvert coming under. Uh, Westlake Road that we're picking up, there's minimal drainage coming down the east side of the road, I mean, there's pipes. Up above to intercept that, so. I mean, does, do they really want that?
Yeah.
Modeling the watershed?
We're just trying to understand what the impacts are to the larger community.
Considering that.
He didn't turn it on before.
Um, it might be easier just to demonstrate that. Excuse me, but a flow through a corrugated metal pipe is a lot less than it is.
That makes sense, sure.
So. As an engineer, you should be able to do that.
Definitely, definitely.
But if the pipe, but the pipe's gone. The pipe's going to disappear.
It's gone.
So we, we're going back to an open channel. So what? What modeling is necessary? If we're going back, if we're returning it to pre-existing conditions?
Well, I think that one. I think it's something we can look at, I guess, if that's what the board's opinion is here. Maybe it's not necessary, we can. I'll ask our engineering team to go back to it and. And see if it's necessary, if there's some other alternative, but. My understanding, of course, is that we're trying to make sure that whatever improvements here are shown, like right now, you're. I understand you're trying to reduce what was improved, but also listening back to. The pre-existing condition, with the exception of stone base, and I don't think there's any part. And I think that we just want to understand the potential for erosion, um. And what. Storm or improvements, I guess, in the site design criteria, if there's some sort of disturbance that might require some sort of. Um. Some other. Drainage improvements, I guess, there. But the short version is, I'll talk to our team and see if that's. Necessary, if we can make contact.
Yeah, well, I mean, wouldn't. The real, number one, Ash, we just remove everything that was done, leave it how it was before.
Yeah. I, I understand that.
Well, we're trying to protect the Messina property, so all we want to do, we want to do that, and then just put some, some s- medium stone fill to protect the Messina property.
We're also in a place, though, where you're going to us after the fact, we don't really know what was there previously, understand that that's.
I'll show you photos.
We have photos.
Yeah, I mean.
Send a video you showed.
Yeah.
Understand, we're, we're hearing about this for the first time, okay, so we don't know what it looked like before. You disturbed an existing stream bed, I think that's what the concern is. That. While it may be eroding, you still had disturbed. Um. Is the material that you put under the pipe? Is that stone that's sufficient? Um, to resist erosion? I'm asking you the question.
I can't, I can't answer that, I, I haven't seen it, it's buried, so I don't know what was put in. I was told it's heavier than.
Okay, so you didn't.
Oh, no, oh, no, it was, everything was built and then after the fact. We, we needed to come in front of the planning board to get what had been constructed approved. Which we.
Constructed.
Well, Cory, Cory, um, Cory Rogers with my direction, I'm a retired professional engineer.
Oh, okay, oh, all right, I'm retired as well.
Um, so I thought, I thought the board was aware of all this, though, of the, the sequence of events and.
Yeah, it already.
Didn't know when the engineering part came in.
It, it, it never has, really, I've done very little, all I've done is on this last plan is design some lining for the, the portion of the channel on the Messina property. That, that's, that's it, I mean, as for the pipe, I mean, but everything that Cory did seemed to make sense, I would have just beefed up some of the stone, the slope protection a little bit more, but. Thirty six inch smooth bore pipe. Seemed, seemed to make sense with a thirty six inch corrugated discharging into it. So.
And we reduced the slope with, with the pipe, so it slowed the water down. Compared to what was there before.
Well, smooth bore pipe. Is going to increase the velocity.
The pipe you put in is there. And is it going to come out? Yes, it's going to come out, so. The pipe, that's everything, everything's coming out that was pla- placed in the, in the channel, the. The stone, the pipe, uh, everything off the neighbor's property, some of the material placed on the Messina property will remain, not all of it, I mean, there's going to be surplus that'll have to be trucked offsite. And a lot of it's going to be replaced with the medium stone fill as well, so. Uh, a lot of waste at that point.
Before you laid the pipe, you put stone in the existing.
Yes, we didn't touch any dirt, we built, we.
Built it up. Okay. Okay.
With heavy stone.
Heavy stone.
Yes.
And, and.
And put a catch basin in front.
That out, if it's going to.
It's on my neighbor's property.
No, I, okay. Are they objecting to the pipe?
They reject, yeah. There's a, there's a letter in there.
No, I read the letter.
Yeah.
I read the letter, but, you know, the. So. My concern is that you're, if you remove that stone. Then you may be disturbing soil below. Which. Has no protection from any erosion. Has no protection from any erosion.
That's where it started.
Right. And does the highways, the the county highway superintendent have authority? Over that drainage?
Have authority over the.
Highway superintendents within the county or your town, they have certain rights to go into. Drainage ways to protect them from erosion. Irregardless of what property.
I went to the Ontario County Highway Department initially, and they sent me to the Ontario County. Gosh, it's over the Water Authority, Soil and Water. Who told me Ontario County Highway Department. Did what they could within the right of way, and then they said. You gotta go to Soil and Water, and I went to Soil and Water and told me I'm on my own. And it's non-regulated drainage.
Right, okay.
So the sequence, as I see it, is. You had an issue that. Forced caused you to. Well, no, to go and Cory, or he said, somebody made a decision, we're gonna put a thirty six inch smooth board. In this alignment, and. Then it was discovered, I guess, by the town that it was put in in violation without a permit from the town. You had to go to the planning board, so you came to the planning board with your application, the initial plan that we saw. Uh, confirming what you had already done. And then through the course of that review, it's found that the neighbor. Didn't want the pipe on his properties. So now we're going to have to dig the pipe out and remove the pipe. And also re-divert. Stream. Totally onto your property.
No.
No, not gonna be a totally, okay. I think just put it back to where it was.
It's just. It'll right where it was.
With some improvements as far as. Embankment protection.
On my property.
Correct.
On your pro.
It's it's the game plan.
That's a lot of stone. Well, I guess the concern is, you know, what what'll be left on the. Neighbor's property upon the removal of the pipe. And you're putting that back, I mean, there's. There could be erosion and potential problems on his property.
Could be, I mean, I've got photos of it.
Well, I'm looking at it from the town perspective, I'm not looking at it from. Your your perspective and Mr. Turk's perspective, because if there's a potential for erosion. That could occur as a result of this. Remediation. I guess that goes back to the concern that I have that, okay, we're just putting it back, we're gonna put it back the way it was. Uh, originally, and it was a problem before, and it'll be a problem again. That's essential, I think, what I'm hearing here.
And you said you're gonna put dirt back on the turret. Whatever.
It already was dirt, I mean, we didn't even, we didn't touch it, just leave the stone out.
First rain will.
Yeah, I mean.
Carry it.
It's a pretty big turn rate, right towards the bomb. Where it's gonna erode anyways.
Yeah, that's that's my property there.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So on that drawing, is the pipe in line with direction of the? Uh, drainage one?
Pretty much.
And it continues onto your property?
It does, but then it kind of bends to pretty much follow the the property line, the common line down towards the lake. Then it meanders off, I think it meanders off at the end down down to your property again.
Yes.
Well, you're gonna need protection where it where it bends. Because it's the outside of the stream that's going to have the highest velocity, not the inside.
What, where what ends?
Where you where your stream change direction.
Okay.
On the arc is where you want your erosion protection. On the arc.
I I think we've covered that, but I will double check. Once we get the contours on the plan, it'll be more apparent.
Well, are the contours going? That was just one of the comments that we had on the letter.
We can add the contour, we left them off, but it just got so confusing, you know, because we've got. Pre-construction contours. Based upon old mapping we have. We have what's been built contours, and then we're trying to recreate. Pre-construction contour, it gets very confusing to show. Existing, proposed, and it's a mess, but we can add those.
Yeah, I understand what this says, so three phases, maybe a normal set.
Well, I I think what you're trying to do on your property, you know, is to your credit, and I think you're trying to do what. Needs to be done for the most part to protect the stream bed, but then we've got this. Again, this void on the turret property that essentially you're gonna go in there, rip out a pipe, throw some dirt back down. And it's gonna be the same or worse than it was. Before, because I assume before it had some sort of vegetation.
It had no vegetation.
And no vegetation.
Okay, because it was it was bare, it it eroded, but. He didn't have a garage near the uh, the stream bed there, the ditch, so he wasn't worried about, you know, losing a structure. Which Messina structure is fairly close, and you know, the erosion is causing concerns. Yes, I don't think we're gonna get the neighbors' cooperation, do much of anything other than. Remove what you placed on our property. I mean, they may allow us to throw some some seed down or something to get some vegetation. But.
Is another reason uh, that you want the pipe removed, is it was not effective?
Oh, it worked very well.
We don't want the pipe removed.
What's there?
Can you install a different pipe that's solely on your property? Or would that?
No, can't it. You can see where the property line is right there, and it's where the stream is going. Well, the stream goes underneath it.
And a pinch point is almost right on top of this. I mean, this sounds like a Kevin Oldany. I mean, it's almost, it it takes someone who. You know, can. Oversees as sovereign over the two property owners, that has the ability to come in and say, all right, this is what has to be done. For the sake of protecting the lake. And.
I did a bolt, a belt and suspenders approach. When I went after it, and it's worked great. It could have backed off, probably no one would care. But this is where we are, it's working. I don't know if Kevin's seen it.
Uh, I know he was, he was given a referral for this application. Whether he looked at it, we didn't get any response from him.
It was, um. I know in my letter too, that some of the responses were, like, we'll look at it. County Highway, code of fortitude said basically that. They looked at it in December, when the west basically, we gotta take another look at it, and they said, we'll look at it again when. A new plan has been provided or something like that. I'm not sure that they've seen the new plan. Whether it was kind of resubmitted or whether they're re-notified about. The new plan that came inside, like they've seen. This version. This cloud permit says that they signed December second. So that's what they sent to him.
And I know Mike Murphy said, you know, the new plans and he has permits that he's gonna require.
But Mike had seen it, and. And he was okay with it until the neighbor wasn't, I mean.
When it was just the pipe, yeah. Could we?
Well. That the 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 ask is to remove it. What we have before us is to remove. So. We should just act on that, I I mean. I suspect.
It's more than.
If if you guys can't come to an agreement. It may become a legal matter. Think we probably need to just stick with what's in front of us now. You're prepared to move forward with what you need to do?
What if we don't prove it? And the pipe has to stay in the ground where it is?
And how, we don't have the authority to put a pipe on somebody's property?
No, I know that, just.
And to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know that I'm I'm thrilled with the gap between two pipes. It's just. An opportunity for the pipes that we clogged, something to fall down, something that needs to be maintained. You know, your your drainage stone is working till it gets silted. And then it doesn't work in.
So half a tree comes down and blocks it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well.
Is there anything that they could provide that would make you feel more comfortable? Leaving, I'm suggesting anyways, like a continuation to buy that information, or is this kind of as good as it gets in in all the opinions?
I think the the letter was clear. Uh, on behalf of Mr. Turk, if I'm on its engineering, they wanted their rules, so.
Right, I understand that is the proposal of them.
Yeah.
Have you been given a timeline to get the pipe off my property, or?
No, I. Come up with a plan to do it, and I came here to get.
Any notice of a judgment or anything?
Oh, no.
Yep. Trespassing.
And I understand that, it's his property, I'd like to honor that, move forward.
Shame, shame you didn't understand it before I put the pipe in.
Um, I had a survey that was not accurate.
Cheese gets more binded.
So I'm just going forward with the correct survey and remedying what we've got. Uh, the sorry is I, I appreciate.
No, I don't know. Yeah.
Was a lot of sleep.
I I have got a couple of issues after mine, too, so I think that you had surveys done by LS and.
Well, board, is there anything that? A continuation would get us in terms of seeing more detail, I know. The M R B letter did request additional information. Uh, yeah, I thought this plan was a little brief, but I understand Glenn why you made it somewhat. Brief because it could get very busy.
It will.
Or. We look.
I see you go forward and continue, well. That's amazing. It's gonna come out. I would imagine it's gonna be. Better than what it was. An author property. In my mind, after I walked out there and looked at it. Wow, that's a lot of stone to take out. I can imagine some stone being left out in the bottom. But you said something about a catch basin?
Well, that's what Paul calls between two pipes, right?
Yeah, we made, well, we made a catch basin with fabric and stone.
I mean, Paul would be more than willing on the turret property, throw down some some ryegrass seeds, something that grows quick. Throw down some mulch and call it a day, but just don't tell him. Don't tell him we're gonna do that.
Well, I think you're ob, you're obligated wherever you disturb property. To restore, whether it's on your property or somebody else's property, if you're in there, you know, digging it up. You gotta put it back to somewhat of a specification that. We have a chance of seed grow, I mean, it'd be nice to put stone in, but you know, like, can't do that, so. If nothing else, uh. I think the town can protect you in that respect, in terms of a soil erosion control. Uh, that that has, if it's taken out, it's gotta be. You know, topsoil and seeded, and maybe silt fence. Now, also.
Has Mr. Turk agreed? The plan that you've provided?
He, he deferred to Brendan Marks.
Yeah, and Brendan Marks said that he'd like the plan, but I don't, I mean, it's the difference between.
That's.
Getting the green light.
All I could get from him.
Because you're gonna need permission to go on his property.
To remove.
Remove it.
Right.
And that's, that's what they wanted to do, so that's what we're gonna do.
Condition of anything we approve. Has to also have the approval.
Approval of the property. Good point.
Yeah.
I think that that's a good condition.
Okay, as far as the hydraulics and and all that stuff, I mean. In your review, if we prove it, uh. With needing the engineers. Requirements, uh, you can work with Glenn and make sure that hydraulics are worked out. Uh, certainly any. Any protection that can be provided. E- either on the scene of property. Or minimally on the turret property once the pipe's taken out.
Okay, you're talking about during construction protection or afterwards?
Uh, upon the removal of the pipe and the re-establishment of the. So we have a condition here that. Need to prove the engineer. Any condition? Uh, is the board comfortable with the moving ahead with? The resolution as proposed, plus at least one more condition, I guess, as Tim mentioned regarding the. That you get the approval of the turks before you remove the pipe.
I have it noted already as condition nine.
There it is, yep.
If that's all right, as far as the timer goes, had it before permit.
Okay, with you, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. It says the approval consent from the neighboring affected property owners required prior to the issuance of a permit.
I can specify.
Okay. Alright, uh. Anyone here? Want to address the board regarding any of this application? Not you, sir, okay, you're the only other person I don't recognize.
Uh, adding contours, one of the conditions or?
Uh, yeah, that'll be something, that was in the M R B letter.
That was one of the conditions, address all the comments in that letter, or?
We can work with you on it, but yes, that's one of the conditions stressing comments of the town engineer and subsequent views.
Alright. If you, I think we're saying, uh, uh. Need to, you know, the township engineers review of how, you can take out the word comment letter, or you can say. Apply with. You could word it differently, well, not leave it, leave this comment letter. I mean, you can interpret the comment.
We can work with you on that.
Okay.
How I respond to those things, that's.
Alright, so.
I'm not gonna speak for the town engineer, but I think what what I. What I would be looking for is to see that you are restoring the stream cross-section. To its original profile or cross-section and profile. And I think that brings it right back to where it was, so you're not making it narrower. That can create um, more velocity in whatever it's give.
If we agree, let's see intent. Unfortunately.
Okay. So, uh. Tim, do you want to make a motion regarding this application?
Sure.
Oh, excuse me, we also have a seeker type two. But I will, uh.
In a bundle?
I will accept it, but.
Alright. I will make. Motion to, um. Accept C P N twenty four, one twenty seven. And a type two seeker. For five oh, four one, County Road sixteen. With how many conditions?
Still nine.
Nine conditions.
Okay, I'll second. Can motion second for discussion? If not all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Boost. Nice habit, motion carries. Alright. Let's move on to the other Messina project. Which is the septic system. And this is a C P N twenty five. Twelve, uh, excuse me. Twenty five oh thirty six. Somehow Kristen Smith's got in here. Uh, this is an application from Kristen Smith and Paul Messina. For a site plan for the septic system in the R L D. And, uh, it's it's more than five hundred square feet of disturbance, so. And, uh, it's it's more than five hundred square feet of disturbance, so therefore you are. Here to see us regarding your septic system, so. Tell us about what you have existing and what you propose to put in.
I currently have three one thousand gallon holding tanks. So we get pumped out about every eight weeks. Um. We had, I think it was last year. The inspection that you periodically have to have for your septic system. And and Tyler was out and he said. I think you could probably do a real septic system here. So. Um, I had Bill Grove do a plan. And. It's the plan that you see here, uh. A raised presby system. Um, Tyler approved it. And when I had a couple quotes and wound up going with Barry Sinkin, when Sinkin went to get the permit. We told we had to go to the planning board. Which. Was new for him, he did my neighbors the year before, um.
What's your name is?
Oh, gosh. So the idea is to is to utilize the current holding tanks part of the system and put in a lead field.
Uh, down along the shoreline, so right?
Well.
Between the house and the.
Between the house and the lake, it's probably forty feet up from the shoreline.
And I'm not totally familiar with regulations on septic, uh, is there any setback requirement from the lake?
I don't know, I know Bill and Bill did and Tyler approved it, so I.
No.
Tyler Oldman, he's the, um.
Water shed inspector.
Inspector Septice.
Okay, so the health department, state health department is not involved?
No.
You taking down?
Remember George.
Are you gonna kick down any trees?
I don't plan to, no.
I noticed that one. Close.
And you're gonna keep all three things?
Yes, so one, the first one will be like a holding tank, the second one is a. As the inoculator pump in it, the third one. Gosh, I'm not sure what they're doing with that, but it runs from the third one down to the septic field.
So.
So the first one will take you solid.
Yes.
This lake setback, about this thirty feet.
Thirty? Yeah. You said you're forty.
Well. As far as setback from the lake, um.
Mean high water.
I mean. If I look at it, hey. In world significantly above the mean high watermark.
Oh, yeah, now I realize that, yeah.
But in the plan view, I'm not sure how far we are back from it.
Hmm, let's see. Okay, from the, you know, addressing the concern about shoreline guidelines, uh, what's gonna look like from the lake? So essentially, if you're out on the lake. Well, this one has a, I guess in your profile, has a general rise to it, the prissy system.
Drive by my house from the lake, you won't see it.
There's a lot of foliage.
So there's foliage between the lake and the system.
Yes.
Yeah.
I had a chance to go out there this weekend and it's the risk is that we're gonna lose, he's got some nice trees and it's probably gonna lose in the root system. But it's still outside of the rest of the shoreline being impacted by that, if those don't make it, you still.
I think he's like forty one feet away, that's what I measured. From the lake. Okay, well, it it wasn't clear to me, I didn't. I didn't walk down down below, uh. For the purpose of the record, if you could give us a statement about state shoreline guideline. Statement stating that. No trees will be removed. Uh, that.
I can't promise that, I mean, my my neighbor had a tree come down on their house last year. And they didn't intend to remove it, but it's. I mean.
For the purpose, for the purpose of the system, the no trees will be removed.
I, no, I, no trees will be removed for the system.
That would be in that state.
So we're just asking.
Well, you needed like a letter?
Just the letter with the shoreline guidelines.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Then submit it to the, um, file.
Right, Kristen, who's your co-applicant? Uh. Yeah, and also, uh, mentioned with the foliage that exists down between the lake and the system that, uh. You won't see it, it'll be no view from the, uh, from the lake. And, uh, I think that would do it.
Do you want to ask for just the dimension on the setback? Since that came up as a question?
Sure. And you found it. As as a condition on the plans?
Yeah.
Long as there's a code reference.
And I'm sure Tyler wins the approval.
Right.
Bill doesn't have Tyler's actual approval yet, right?
It's on the, it's on the, um, plan that was.
Oh, okay. Oh, sixteen, so he signed off on?
Yes.
Usually it's after the fact, but that's, that's good. You got the, get Tyler to sign it before, uh. We took care, good for you, uh.
So do I need the setback now or no or?
Uh, yeah, in in that statement, we were talking about just, yeah. Prefer the setbacks.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
And I think that covers some, just look at some of the third party referrals, I know the ECB discussed it, uh. There were really no actual comments regarding the application, I guess, either application in the drainage or the. Or the septic system, uh. County Public Works had no comments of that, was referring to the previous application. County Plane Board found both applications to be exempt. Ag committee, obviously no effect on ag lands. MRB did have some comments on this application also. Which I think were minor.
Yeah, um, I understand this plan was. It's for outside waste origin system, but showing soil erosion measures. Limiting disturbance, which on soils, um, yeah, and then. Is there? Like a law? What was that right?
There is right now.
So that's gonna be just.
We'll redirect it, yes.
So it's gonna be.
They'll be removed, they'll be redirected and removed when they put that in.
Well, um. So our comments largely related to just providing some of the requirements for site plans. Um, and this is, it's. Soil erosion.
And Bill should be, most of those, yeah. Okay, so that's MRB. And anybody here regarding Mr. Musina's application for septic system, address the board. If not, uh. We'll move on. Is the board ready to, uh, act? Is that seeker or this? Uh, the seeker, it's a separate seeker type two. With a septic system along with the site.
And this is thirty six, is that correct?
Oh, thirty six.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to approve, uh. The. Seeker resolution for CPN twenty five dash zero three six. With a site plan approval for the septic system at the same site fifty forty one cutting road. With, uh, how many?
There are now the additional condition about those sudden occurrences.
And I think seven eleven are the same. So.
Oh, I think it's.
And just some middle of, some middle of the letter to.
So shoreline. And place. Eleven will be deleted, twelve will be accepted. Now being eleven, the second I mentioned from the outside waste achievement. And then. Uh, the twelfth condition, the, yeah, which is the shoreline guidelines.
Thank you. Okay. Alright, sound good, everyone? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, for discussion, if not all in favor, aye. Post, then have it, okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
You got this system along your your own property, right?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Hey, kid doki, so, uh. Opening a public hearing. For Anthony Venezia, twenty twenty five. Zero. Well, for a site plan. Approval from the plane board for the construction of a little over eight thousand square foot commercial facility in the CC zoning at eighteen eighty. State Route three thirty two. Uh, we received late this afternoon, a. Request from, uh. Mister Venezia to, uh, continue this to the June. Tenth meeting. So, uh.
Any continuation?
Yeah, we'll continue the public hearings. Till June tenth, that was a motion, right?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second. And further discussion? I know, uh. Kristen's gonna. Re-look at the the new plan. Changed the configuration and we have the elevations now of the. Event center and, uh, I think there may be some issues that will have to be addressed either. Prior to our taking any action. Uh, or at the very least, some updating of the plans to allow us to consider this application, because I think. Couple of things have changed out there since the original plan, so, uh. That being said, I'll take a motion or take a vote on. Continuing to June tenth, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay. On the June. Very good, Eric, you you anticipated it. You had the continuation resolution there?
But I also have a continuation resolution as well, too.
Alright, next one, uh. It is CPN twenty twenty five oh twenty four. Uh, that's from Megan. Orms, uh, it's forty nine sixty five Emerson Road. Request a special use permit. To, uh. For a major home occupation to operate a dog grooming business. Inside an existing private garage in the R one thirty district, I will open the public hearing. Is anyone here?
John Wurms.
John, come forward.
How's it going?
Okay, tell us, you live, I assume, at forty nine sixty five Emerson?
We do, we moved there in February.
Alright, so what do you and? Your wife?
Megan.
Okay, uh, intend to do out there?
Uh, to raise our family and for her to be able to run a business she started back in two thousand twelve.
Okay. And, uh, I think you. Submitted some statement of operations or she did, uh, as to how the business would operate.
Correct.
When it would operate. And. Think, uh. You submitted the checklist as to. What's needed for a special use permit for a major home occupation. Did the board see that in the, uh? In the current, okay, uh. Does anyone have questions, Mr. Wurms?
Uh, don't get Mark in.
So your statement of operations said, John, that you were going to operate from ten to four on Fridays and Saturdays?
Correct.
But then there was a. Could operate during the week if we have a special request, is that? Something that occurs or could occur frequently or?
She operates a business by appointment only, she only makes sure there's a certain amount of traffic flow coming in, um. Typically, she's doing those days, those are the days I'm home, able to be with the kids while she works. Uh, if I have the week off. She could take other days, uh, Monday through Saturday is all she would do. And her hours would only ever be from ten AM to four PM.
Okay. Would there be any overnight housing of the dogs at all or?
No.
They they come in, they get.
They get charged that dogs there too well.
Okay, because I know you said you have a kennel.
Right.
But that's just to hold the dogs until the owners come to pick them up.
Correct.
Yeah. You talked about insulating your garage, uh. You going to insulate or it has been insulated?
It has been insulated.
Uh, as far as third parties, I committee certainly had no issue with it. And the only other. Third party was the code enforcement officer and he had no objections. He did say no signing until a permit is issued. You see any signings you talked about, was it signed to the entrance?
For the door, yeah, the mayor door into the garage. Yep.
Okay. So I assume he'll need some sort of C of O from. Murph or Kit Kyle or some, is there some sort of permit? Although especially.
I think it, I think he meant if he was doing like a.
Exterior sign.
Oh, no, yeah, just one on the door so they know which door to go into.
Board, anything else? Okay, anybody? Nobody in the audience, uh. So we'll move on, I'll close the hearing and we'll, uh. Consider the special use permit. Down to that. Yeah, we have a seeker, is it, I'm listening, type two shows, type two? Okay, type two. So let's put that together with the special use permit, there's no site plan. Helping this application, so, uh. Someone want to give me a motion on the seeker type two combined with the SUP?
I'll make a motion to approve the seeker type two resolution. Uh, combined with the special use permit for CPN twenty five oh twenty four. At forty nine sixty five Emerson Road.
Hey, thank you, Dan. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion, if not, we have, uh, six conditions. And there are SOP. Proof on one, say wastewater capacity shall be provided. He did provide.
He provided, alright, so I'm glad you brought that one up. For my review with what was shown, and this is really up to you all, and see if you see it still, that. The septic was inspected when you purchased property, is that right? And then bathroom is the place. Um, so that relates more to the function of it, I'm not sure if that relates to the capacity, if you're using additional water for. And stuff like that, so and that condition was the same as a previous SUP for a dog's.
Training area.
Uh, the one that I'm thinking of and use or referred to as draft conditions. Was for dog washing, it was only not.
Yeah, with the dog training.
So anyways, um, there's good news that was put on a previous one. They have a letter from this one, I'm not sure if that satisfies you all.
So, uh, well, it's a.
What was provided for the not room?
Oh. Capacity, that was a kennel, that was, no, it was a training, oh, training, that training. John, when your wife grooms a dog, is it involve, uh. Shampooing and washing, uh. Yeah, correct, so there is, there is wastewater.
Correct, yeah.
And you're at the garage.
Mm-hmm.
And where does that, that water goes into the septic system?
Correct, yeah.
It's not gray water.
Wait, was there a, um, estimated number of dogs per?
Wait, was there a, um, estimated number of dogs per
Per day or?
Day, yeah, I mean, you're only doing really two days.
Yeah, really, it's, uh, a per week basis. She's, she's doing four to seven or eight dogs at most.
For the week.
For the week.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I, I don't think it would be a strain on the system.
Right, and I mean, if your hours were to increase, then we'd have to come back.
Yep, that's one thing I was gonna say that.
So.
What was stated here tonight and what you stated in your statement of operations is what the permit is based on. So if you have any changes, you have to come back see us, so.
Like if you're gonna.
For a new permit or revise the current permit?
I, I don't know how that works. You revise the existing. Either.
You have to get a permanent permit, yeah.
Then, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Well, it's.
But either way, with the what the approval would be conditional upon is that you have somebody come out and provide, have a professional give him a statement that states that based on four to seven dog a week, this system has capacity. That's what we're asking for.
Isn't this what this is? I, I missed this. Zinc septic solution. There's also a letter too from Finger Lakes.
I just didn't see the verbiage that states that it will meet the capacity. I mean, that's what the states were looking for.
Go back in cloud, there's a maybe Kim can find it. I think there was a, a letter from Finger Lakes Septic right here.
You sent me from Septic.
Finger Lakes, sure.
How many bedrooms you, you have?
I think just three bedrooms.
Just an inspection.
An inspection.
I just need them to add a statement that states it will handle.
So, I know septics are based on ba- bedrooms.
Right.
That's why I know. So, yeah, exactly. That's all. That's how it's sized.
How many bedrooms does he have?
Three bedroom. Yeah.
I mean, they're all sized for four minimum, their services in general.
Normal. You have kids?
Yes.
Young, they take a motion.
They don't want to take showers.
Oh, that young.
Yeah, it looks like the previous application, the one that I was kind of referring to during this conditions. They got an inspection from the County Soil Water Conservation District, which looks like satisfied condition, which is similar, basically, just talking like the function of the system. This case doesn't seem like it is. Like there might have been some issue with that, like that. There was just an inspection on the system, make sure it was functioning.
They charge you fee for that?
Soil water? All right, well, I mean, if we did for other ones. That's not one that's too big a deal.
How many gallons does each dog take to groom?
Well, it's certainly not going to.
It's the size of the dog. The system.
Port not explained.
And the system would have a capacity of seven more humans to it. And it's not gonna use that one. But again, I think it's just getting whatever did the inspections to state that it can handle a capacity of
Some dog mass.
Some dog mass.
Maybe you can get a Finger Lakes from, you know, environmental. I assume that's who you.
That's who I had.
And they could just amend that letter to provide that information that based on your anticipated business of dog grooming and, uh, the hours that you would be open. Uh, is there enough capacity remaining in your septic system to be able to handle that?
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for, Mo?
I'm just trying to meet that condition of what's in there now for that point, that's all.
Okay, well. Would that do it?
That would do it.
Okay.
I think he's gonna run into other problems if it starts to become a problem first. He's gonna want that septic. So I'm buying that to edit to their.
No, the septic checked out when they inspected in February.
Yeah, I, it, it was, it says it's, it's good for the current operation. I think what we're saying is assuming you're not operating already as a dog grooming facility, uh, with the anticipated additional load of the the dog grooming, how much effect of?
Okay.
You know, we're done. Well, you have that, I guess.
It's already there.
That's already there. That's right. We're, we already got the resolution, so we gotta figure out how to meet it. Okay. That's how you meet it. Okay, John?
Hmm.
So you got a motion and a second discussion, and now we need a vote.
Is that where we're at?
Yep, you got that for.
I'm off the drift at all. No, I don't. All right, again, motion, a second, and no further discussion, and we'll vote all in favor.
Aye.
Post. Okay, thanks, John. So you need, you still need that?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that'll be a conditionary of your approval. Yep, if you could have the folks from Finger Lakes do that for you, okay?
Okay.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Greg still here?
Okay.
We will now move on to C P N twenty twenty five oh twenty nine. Uh, McMahon LaRue for five 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 Purdy Road. Final site plan for phase one of Canada Country Estates, which includes twenty three proposed manufactured homes as part of an overall site plan that we approved uh, back in twenty twenty four. And I guess my first question, do the preliminary overall, did that get signed and everything get done?
We don't have plans yet.
Oh, you don't have plans?
I, I don't know where we stand with that. I've we.
I believe. I believe they're waiting for one thing, and that's me to sign off on their proposed easements before you can, uh, sign the plans, Chuck, and I'm gonna do that tomorrow.
Okay. So any, uh, any action we take tonight with the conditional on that occurring?
Correct, yes, we understand it there. Like, I think we've, we've addressed all the comments. We're just like few loose ends that need to be tied.
Appreciate Chris.
And if there's anything that I need to do to expedite it, we'll do that.
All right, so tell us about phase one.
All right, so we're, we're back in here with final plans for phase one, which, uh, comprises twenty three sites for modular homes. Uh, this will be, uh, the entrances was proposed off Purdy Road and the connection to the existing, uh, one of the existing roadways for the, uh, Canada Country Estates, um, initial construction. Uh, this will, uh, bring in a new sanitary sewer from Purdy Road, uh, new water main from Purdy Road and, um, a stormwater mitigation, uh, contained within the phase. Couple of temporary turnarounds at the ends of stub streets. That pretty much, uh, again, it's all, all of this work uh, is in conformance with the plans that you, with it, we presented and you approved. Um, the layout, um, you know, there, there, we've just embellished, uh, the plans. I think, uh, that summarizes this work. We did, uh, I received the, the M R B comments, uh, at the end of last week, and I've, I've read through them. We haven't responded to them yet, but I think at this point I can say there was nothing, nothing in there that we felt was a deal killer. Um, we can, the plan comments were all pretty straightforward. There's, uh, several pages that have to do with, um, uh, the SWIP. Um, you know, among those, when we did the, we did the original stormwater report for preliminary and in February of this year, the D E C came out with, um, a new permit, so there, some of the documents need to be updated uh, before that can become official, but, um, we will be addressing all of the M R B comments. I did read through the county planning board. Uh, really didn't have anything, uh, they had seen this under its preliminary application and had no real, uh, additional comments. And I also saw the the, um, Environmental Conservation Board minutes, and there didn't seem to be anything in those minutes that, that would result in any changes to the plans.
Did you see Jim Fletcher's?
I have not seen Jim Fletcher's and also and I don't know if I, I missed these someplace, but, uh, Eric, in, in your letter, you refer to comments from, under the utilities, comments from the, uh, Farmington Water District. And we've never, we, I don't know if those came directly to the town. We never received those comments. I think Eric's letter summarized those comments. Um, we're we're trying to, there, there are a couple of issues, at least as we perceive with cloud permit, that we're trying to work through. Um, we get notified whenever the town posts anything on cloud permit, but when other agencies, M R B, hmm, we, we don't get notified, so it's only if we're happen to be on there looking through, we see something, so we'll we'll work that out. I think from now on Eric's gonna copy me on any comments, but I think it's, it's probably a lot of people are having those issues too, so.
Well, yeah, the Farmington is critical. I know, uh, another application in that service areas had some issues of getting approval from Farmington, so hopefully.
There are comments, we didn't have any, you know, the comments that the M R B's letter presented under the utilities didn't cause us any concern.
Well.
And if that's the sum and substance of all of the district's comments, we'll, we'll address those.
You're gonna need a sign off from them.
Yep.
Yep.
And so we'll, um, we will take care of that. Now, I mean, ultimately too, with dedicated store, I'm sorry, dedicated sanitary and water. Once we address all those comments and, and we're uncomfortable with the plans as they are, these have to go to D E C for the sanitary sewer, and they have to go to state health for the water mains. So that's an additional step in this process that, uh, we will undertake, but it's something that we won't move ahead with until we've, we're sure that we're in good stead with the town and with the uh, Farmington.
Okay.
I think those comments came from the town of Farmington as part of preliminary as well. So that's where those are being referenced.
Okay, well.
If you go to cloud.
I'll take a look and just to make sure I've got everything in.
Uh, game back, uh, Mr. Fletcher, uh, he, he said there were some random easements to the town that he didn't understand why we needed them. He doesn't want any more easements that he has to, to maintain. I can understand that. Um.
I don't think there were. There was the trail easement, which was your requirement, and that's been provided. And there's a conservation easement, which is required because of the, uh, stormwater. But then the, the other easements were strictly water and sewer and.
Uh, there, there's Jim's comments. There are two easements to the town for access. What is the access for? Have we reviewed what the language says to the access easements? We don't need random easements to the town.
I, you know, they were access, uh, for the town to access the stormwater pond.
Okay.
Um, so I think that's, that's, there's on the stormwater, it's an agreement. Uh, the town typically that, you know, the, if there's an issue with the pond, they want to be able to.
Right, no, that's, that's okay. Uh, have we come to any conclusion on street names, uh? Right now, you're calling private drive.
We, we will, um, when we resubmit the plans.
No.
We will, um, I will get together with the, uh, applicant and, uh, we'll run these by nine one one and we will have street names on the plans.
Okay. Do the existing streets, they're obviously named. I was gonna go out there this weekend, but yeah, um. Would it just be a, well, continuation, whatever names you have currently?
Yeah.
Is there a theme for your street names, the street names?
I.
To work out, okay.
I don't know.
That's right.
I will, I'll work that out with, um, Vince and his daughters to let them, you know, if they're continuing, if they're all flowers or if they're all trees, something like that, get we'll get some additional names that we can run by nine one one.
Uh, board, these are private streets, uh? Do we want to get into the historic significance of naming streets or?
I was gonna ask the same question.
Okay, well, I knew you were gonna ask.
Yeah. Um, I think it's just check. Just something that they could check on.
Hmm.
I mean, if they have their own names picked, but, um, we always like to have the historical names from our historian, at least have a chance at it. Um, if they've already got picked, they pick them. Yeah, and they're, and they're private, so he's got a whole list of names.
Yeah, and I'm not sure with the existing, um, facility, if they all have separate addresses or if they're, I know they're, um, those gang mailboxes.
Hmm.
If they use the five 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 Purdy Road with, uh, unit uh, one, two, three, four, five, so I'll, I will, um, I'll talk to the Burks and get that straight.
Okay. Yeah.
I do have another question though. Um, that your fifty foot landscaping buffer?
Hmm.
I see off of Purdy Road, you have your easements uh, where you can't do any plantings. And it seems kind of not as dense as what the code says. Uh, I just wonder if you can make that any, uh, denser. The code is pretty clear on it.
I, you, you would like to the landscaping along that Purdy Road buffer to, they have, um, a more dense planting.
Yeah, it says in one thirty four seventeen uh, shall be buffered by a fifty foot zone compressed of densely planted tree shrubs, bushes and flowers. And your plan shows like a maybe thirty foot because of your easements that are there. Um, so you're getting away with a little bit there because of those easements, but then you off to the left here, you actually got to your fifty feet, but still dead, not dense. So I think we need to be a little bit more denser in your landscaping plan to, uh, more be in tune with, uh, one thirty four seventeen.
Okay.
And Greg, related to landscaping, uh, I think in your landscape plan, you show species and that's species and height, I think, but there's, uh, I think the size is missing there.
It's, that was a comment that M R B had.
Right.
And I, I think we'll, we'll, we'll revert to our typical table that will give you the, all, all of the species, the number of each species and the, whether it's if it's bald and burlap two and a half inch, or if it's a six foot uh, five, you know, typically five to six foot fur, pine, whatever, um, but I, yes, we saw that comment.
Okay.
M R B here.
And I guess as, as far as the species, make sure they're native.
Yes. Yep.
They serve your purpose and they serve our purpose, um. The sidewalk with, just to confirm, I think, uh, you had one note in there that it was a six foot.
It was, yeah, just mislabeled it as five foot.
Okay. And I, I know M R B also brought the issue of the driveway apron, the, the space between the sidewalk and the street.
We just didn't show it connecting over to the gutter and we, we've just had, that was some I will add that in, but it would be, it would be the asphalt driveway.
So the asphalt driveway concrete. So the asphalt driveway, concrete sidewalk, asphalt apron. And the street.
Gutter and paper.
That's what you have out there now? Current, I think.
They don't have, uh, the, the, the pavement out there now, it does not have gutters for the most part, it's just asphalt to asphalt.
Okay.
I see that.
Uh, I think, yeah, Kristen had brought up initial lot fifty. Uh, you had the, I guess the entrance. Was in the setback, so was that your issue? Kristen, you said it was. It was questionable or something, something about the lot was. Had a configuration, I think it was in your DLD. Is the.
Yeah, the building envelope didn't seem correct.
Lot fifty?
Lot fifty, yeah, corner there. Is the setback on the side yard on the corner lot, is that sixty feet? Same as the front? Okay, so that's, he's showing the setback line, but it's going through the. Wherever that offset is on the side of the building.
It does look like the porch.
Hmm. Okay, yeah, I'm saying we're talking about great. Lot fifty.
Uh, yes.
Setback, uh. Your building envelope.
Yeah, the building envelope is. The porch is not even this.
Okay, real quick, my last comment, uh, the basins, I wanna go to utility plants. In. You have the three. Three, three uh outfalls into the basin.
Hmm.
Uh, about fifteen, maybe fifteen, eighteen inch. Okay, then you've got the choker pipe. It's three inch going out. And then, uh, then you got an overflow. I guess my question is, if there is an overflow, and where, even without the overflow, where does that water drain, is it heading toward Purdy, is there?
There's such, there's a swale, defined swale that uh. Goes up towards Purdy Road, winds around it, and this, this one, this is the one drainage area. That drains over towards three thirty-two, as opposed to the rest of the site, which. Uh, drains down to the wetland, which is, is uh south of the property, but there's, there's a defined. Swell, just.
Is it showing the grading?
Um, we do have the grading for it, it was probably. I think maybe on the existing condition plan, but if I can make sure that it's highlighted on the grading plan. So you get a little more sense of the direction.
Yeah, right now you're just sort of daylighting it and not saying where it's gonna go, and I, I think that was one of Fletcher's comments also was. Making sure that the gutter in Purdy could carry it toward three thirty.
Yeah, it's a, it's a defined swell that takes it over there, so it, it. And again, we're not increasing, this is. The intent is to.
Again.
Keep it at the same flow rate.
Board, are there questions on the plans? No?
No.
Hey, uh, Hidrow East, you talked about the Hidrow. Talked about the preliminary plans with their status. Yeah, county planning board had no additional comments, the ag committee, I guess the big thing in both the ag committee ECB was. The loss of farmland, and I know that's something that came up with the preliminary review that. You know, I guess it is formed by Pritchard, uh. Pritchard, yeah.
I thought there was a statement that seven.
I have Sutton owns it, uh, owns the adjacent property. Uh. Kim, I think it came up in your meeting, was it Pritchard?
Wow, they, they came up in.
And I. Anyway, um. Our property, uh, and I think it was also noted that it hadn't been farmed in a number of years.
No, it's, it's, it's been farmed, it was in soybean. Last year because we, we had the, um, we had to wait to do the archaeological study until. We, the soybeans were harvested, but I, I, I believe it was corn the previous year, soybeans. But I, I believe Vince told me he didn't renew his lease with the farmer for the coming season.
Okay, and there was a, I'm just taking a look at those notes again Chuck, there was a recommendation that they. Do in lieu of to provide some protection for other valued land in that community. Maybe, uh, maybe Mr. Burke, so let's see. You find it exactly. Further development, this project will cause a loss of agricultural, agricultural lands for the town of Canada, and request the developer provide some other benefits or protections. Of agricultural lands elsewhere in the town. That request was made by Mr. Straker. Chairman.
Okay, that's new.
Then date was the last agony.
Hmm.
And that because of the value of going into the south.
Well, if the town ever adopts EDRs, yeah.
If you have PDF, yeah, where you do the swaps, uh. That's your, how you can take care of something like that, I've seen that we don't have it on the books currently, it'd be. Tough to have Mr. Burton. Compensate.
There's no precedent.
No.
Look at this previously.
Usually it's through incentive zoning or PUD, and, and you would negotiate that as part of rezoning.
Chris, you touched on it, but also whether justice part of premium overall. The ultimate recommendation from Ag was that. The planning board find the overall candidate with stage project does cause the loss of active farmland and is directly next to protected farm. So they're just asking that we.
I agree.
Yeah, I would agree, and I would ask the tags committee to start keeping track of all this lost land. And what, what the outcomes of all these are from the farmer's point of view.
Okay, a minute to reflect that discussion. Uh, anything else? If not, uh, your seeker was handled at the preliminary stage, so we're just looking at the. Oh, I assume nobody's here to uh address the board regarding this application. So let's move on to a. Resolution, uh. Greg, you, you've done a couple amended plans, but you kept the original date of March twenty twenty-five. I, uh, you didn't note any revision dates, uh. Would you, well, okay, uh, just any revisions you do from now on, would you please?
Yes.
Show a revision date. So I guess as far as tonight, we're looking at the plans that are March, March, March twenty twenty-five. Submitted, I think it was April something. The last revision. All right, that being said, uh, we have a resolution in front of us. Number of conditions. Still more access easements, I guess. A lot of these will be, I guess, a number will be uh. Fulfilled with the preliminary. But it's good to keep. Keep track of. Boss first.
Does eleven have its place here in this park area?
What's that?
Does eleven, conditional eleven, the note to be added to plans lawn, area should be ceded and established prior to occupancy. We do that on single family, but I don't know, they have anything.
President here for this one?
Basically, the standard condition, uh.
I know. Yeah, I don't know if the issue CFOs for. Or a modular home. I imagine they do, yeah, there's a building.
Building permit for each one that gets brought on the site.
Okay. Okay. So that note would say, yeah, essentially saying that old, old launch should be established and seeded.
Yeah.
Okay, someone wanna give me a motion if they agree?
Can I add one condition, just.
You can.
Right, sorry, excuse me. Uh, the additional landscaping be provided along the front of Purdy Road. And then our comment layer addresses the revisions to the landscaping plan, so maybe the condition.
Sizes.
And, and, and makes, please just note that it's as per code one thirty-four seventeen. Sometimes it's like our opinion, but the code is the code. So Bob, I'll make the motion for final phased site plan resolution for CPN twenty-five dash zero two nine sixteen. Conditions.
Okay, you got a motion?
I will second Mark.
Bob, for the discussion? Not all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Sure. How far away section two do you think?
I think it's one.
A ways away?
Yeah, uh, I think we're, at the, at the best, we're probably lucky a year from now.
Okay.
Um.
That's.
I, I can't, you know, if.
Depends on market, the market, these lots.
Yeah, these lots are, you know, if he starts construction and he sells these lots out. He may call us and say, let's go to phase one.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
Alrighty. Uh. Let's see, we got a minutes, the minutes from uh May thirteenth. Any additions or corrections to what was distributed? If not, someone give me a motion.
So moved to approval bench.
Second.
And motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we uh. I bring before the board a request that was given to me tonight. For a release of funds. With the Creekview Apartments, section two over on County Route ten. Uh. I said it's discretion of the board, I know, uh, the board likes to. Know of these requests prior to the meetings. So in some cases they can go look at them, which is good. I'm giving money away, so I don't see. Uh, it is for a substantial amount of money, two hundred and seventy, almost two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And. Um, which discretion, it's mostly storm sewer, looks like. Uh, erosion control. Waterline. To you guys, we can do it either way, we put it off or. Dress. I'll look at you more.
Yeah. I touch.
I'll have, yeah, I'll, I, I like to put it off. I think it's, I don't wanna get into oppressive, having, having LOCs come in at the. Level tower.
Two weeks.
Especially the amount of money, if it was, somebody, if it was fifteen hundred dollars for erosion settlement on somebody's property, it'd be one thing, but. Okay.
June tenth issue. That's why I was surprised you didn't reach for it. I look at that car wreck, don't you?
Is this look for more? I knew it, alrighty, uh, no other letter credits. Okay, uh, other business? Uh. Kim, I, I wanted to go back and look at Saturn and get a chance, the Victor. Uh, landscaping and. Is there any way, you know, we could just maybe look at that and. Adopt something similar, assuming that the, I, I think. The last time I looked at it was pretty extensive, yeah.
It's pretty extensive, it's pretty useful.
Yeah, could we maybe focus on both the ECB and the planning board? Uh, looking at that document and just essentially using that as a model. Going with that and just. Putting our name and address on it. Okay. Yeah, I, I. I think it would be, assuming, assuming that, you know, the ECB is okay with what it requires and what it asked for and. Well, I, I know, you know, you folks are very diligent about. You know, native species and, you know, trying to eliminate any invasive species, and as long as that document does what. Uh, you're trying to do, I, I think we.
That, that one does, it's like new basis species, and it gives suggestions for different things like wet areas and. So it is really. As a lot.
Okay. Well, and maybe we don't need as much as that has, but I mean, I think it's, it, it'd be easier that, rather than trying to create your own document. To take that and, and will it do. So maybe if the ECB could look at that, uh, and, and then your recommendations and then. Would that possibly go in the site design? If we come up with a set of specifications, requirements, I know you're looking at the site design manual, right?
I think that it could, I don't recall what like the statuses of those updates right now, as far as it's kind of at the end of the process, maybe we have next round of updates. Um, but it seems to make sense that that's where, no.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a separate document, but it's reference from.
Site design criteria, okay. Anything else board has?
Just, just a couple of things, so. On the special projects from Chinese Chuck, it's, uh, Kim and I have been dialoguing about looking for different things. Like you're just referring to, that we can work on with ECB and planning as well.
Hmm.
Um. So getting our teeth into some of that has been a little bit slow at this point, but I think there's a number of activities that are happening. Across the various boards that are helping to drive them. In this process of looking at the special projects and figure out who's doing what. I think last month or two weeks ago, I gave you the updates that Amanda's gonna be focused on defining. What affordable housing is, uh, Bob's continuing to do some work and look at some other projects towards solar. I've been talking with Tim a little bit on some of the projects, and Dan and I still need to have a conversation on that. But what it drew me to do is actually look at. What it is that we're supposed to be doing according to the comprehensive plan.
The action items?
It's actually kind of interesting because. There ain't a lot in there for us. And I say that a little bit flippantly.
Not as primary, yeah.
Not as primary, and even as secondary, there's not a ton of it. So, and I mean, we can all go through them, but it's heavy around the development side of. Uh, complete streets and trails and things along those lines, and then supporting things like affordable housing. Uh, one of those is even the, um, looking at lake access. Where the primary, it's actually a primary town board to do that, we're, we're secondary to that. And that's actually one area that I've. I'll start taking a look at, because I have interest there myself. Um, and then just looking at other aspects of it. One thing that I'm hearing continuously, not just from our group, but in the town. Is the inability to enforce a lot of what it is that. A lot of what it is that we're trying to do as well, and an example I'll give you is. The RLD requirements that we start talking about. Probably the most ridiculous one to me is the colors of structures. And new construction, there's new construction project that doesn't have CFO. I remember the conversation in the room of saying we should go with muted colors. And as it's finishing, it's literally white and white. So. And there's, when I talked to Mike about it, and I, I think there's little nothing that. He can do about that. So as we look at some of these things, it's the enforcement of it as much as anything, so I cer- I certainly don't want to. Put effort into anything that we sit here, everybody says it's a great idea to do. And then there's no ability to enforce it. So I would just caution everybody to look at some of that, so as you're looking at your passion projects, go take a look at the comp plan. Figure out the things that we can, can and are supposed to be addressing. I think, I would ask, I think much of it goes towards Sarah, looking at some of the numbers. So the affordable housing question coming up again, the comp plan calls for thirteen hundred units in twenty twenty one. Is one of the numbers that comes up, where are we, where does that stand? We asked tonight again about the ag land. And protecting egg land, so where does it stand? How do we get data for some of that? So that's. I'll, I'll throw a note to Sarah and just say, geez, how do we get that?
I've actually asked Jared about that for the ag lands and sent Jared an email. Saying that the ag committee should be monitoring that, not only to the point of what percentage. Where we at, where we at today, what have we lost? What did we lose it to, and what was the effect to the farmer? That's what I want to, that's what I'd like to see the act, and that's what I wrote to Jared.
Okay, cool.
You know, I, I think that, you know, the project that we had for the solar. With the, the agrivox, yeah, it was, it was really interesting. To hear some of the aggro metrics as well, I don't know whether they use that term, but I'll, I'll use that term. You know, is all farm land worth? The same, or is it different? As it is in this case, I'll take, take one step further, what's owned, what's leased. Because obviously. You, you know. Property that is owned a certain way. It's, how is it protected? The egg is not protected unless, unless the zoning change. So. Like many of these overlay districts, if you don't have a change in the zone, somehow protect it. Zoning is the law.
Yeah.
The, the. Underish acres around me. Is owned by people who are in something and some property rights, so they're, you know, they're losing out on their. New Michigan road, is there ones that are finding that one now? They won't have.
But the property owner is not, is not, not part, or not even resident. So. Yeah.
So. Sorry, so if you're looking to protect an asset, I think you need more data, as you said, about the assets. And. What tools we have, again, through laws, regulations to protect them.
It's, it's very hard to say no to a property owner in an R. R one thirty whatever ag. That wants to build a house.
Exactly.
Is, it's very hard. You can't, in other words, that's zoned for that. All we can do is. Implement, I think, right now. The concession that we give out the landowner to, to, just by asking. I mean, there's nothing to force that. But then that was a great example of doing the best that we could to protect it.
Oh, the one there at the corner of twenty one, yep.
So I guess, I guess my point of even bringing it up is to keep, keep you updated on things that I see as special projects, but also. Asking this group and maybe you Chuck as chair to start telling us what you need us to do. But maybe the starting point is picking the comp plan. And then assigning the tasks that we're obligated, we, the comp plan states that we're responsible for. And then potentially the secondaries. And then just start assigning those projects. To see if we can move them, because that's, when I look at our requirements, then that's, that's as close as I can come to it, other than answering the calls that come to us. That as you're looking at projects that you have interest to them. Tim and I have had a little bit of discussion on some of the things that he likes to do too, and. I'm looking forward to the structure that was. The structure, so they. We all look at it, we all come at all of these projects from a very different direction, and it would. I would love nothing other than a. Pages of checkboxes that I should look at every one of them, so that we have a baseline of how we're all looking at them together, and we kind of develop it, but we don't too. And so he.
I, I guess, I guess initially I said that. I would appreciate more collaboration.
Yeah.
Because we each have different experience and. You know, having someone assigned is great, but, you know, I might have an interest in affordable housing or. Some things to share about it, you know, and I think I've said. That in this board that, to me, I've heard affordable housing for forty years. And, and if we're not looking at the secondary market. Then we need to be looking at some sort of subsidy program. Or tax abatement, or something like that, because everybody comes in here and says market that. We're, we're building to market that, and, and that's just the way it is, and unless we change the zoning, unless we change. Something in the town. Or we go, how, how did they do the open for affordable housing over at County Route ten?
That was subsidies.
I mean, part of that point is if it's solar, then of course we rely, we rely on Bob. We, we all, I think, rely heavily on the two, need to look at heavy engineering, we have aspects of the ongoing projects all the time, if it's site distance. We know we're looking at, that's just a natural automatic that it goes there, right? So we're pulling the pieces together of the extra piece, I think we do a good job of that, because we eventually learn it. We don't know it coming in the door, but the general baseline of. What if somebody's not here? What if it's a soldier, I know Bob's going to have us a diatribe, but Bob wins the lottery and moves to wherever that is. So that would be part of the goal, and then. Making sure that we're doing, at least picking up the pieces that we know. That we were, were assigned to us, or decide that we shouldn't. Or we could do that too.
Or share with other members too.
Yeah, and, and.
So all diverse on.
We talked about checklist and all that stuff, we can't be night and day. We have to have some gray, we have to have some ability to wave and allow certain levels. We don't want to stop development. Now, what I'm actually thinking of is, I'm still, so I'm at this couple of years. And I keep hearing little things that you guys catch on sites, that somehow you're going through a checklist in your head. That it would have been, oh, I should have looked at that time. I don't know if you're getting that much time, but. Just some thoughts.
Old sage, the old, us old sagers, yeah.
So I will pick up the, as, and I'll start probably just by liaising with the town board to talk to them about the access. Because that's one of the things that we were, so.
God, I'd love to see that.
You got some good ideas, I might, I might not be very popular with them, because everybody thinks I'm, I'm on the foot.
Dan, is there anything with committee you chair that would be appropriate? To this group in terms of, I know that's mostly community involvement.
I mean, we did go over the comprehensive plan, that's mainly just in response to some of the issues that we did. Townwide survey, so we kind of focused specifically on. Few issues, not the entire comprehensive plan.
Did that survey reveal any issues that this board might be? About that looking at or?
One thing was obviously just transparency with town operations, that was one of the issues people raised is. More about how the subsidy gets made. You know, projecting natural resources and the lake was obviously the number one issue. So I guess those are the only. What affects the planning. Okay, no, I like, the, all three are, actually housing was obviously the second. Issue that was on, what people's biggest concerns were, specifically like short-term dangers. Adverse impact.
And so, so there are so many different things that can be impacted in at least two of those, so you talked about the environmental piece, and. We had a chance to talk about this last week, but there's so many pieces of that. Of trying to make sure that we don't impact that natural resource. But also maintaining the value that it has for the town, but storm water, stormwater runs such a major topic. That.
Definitely need to change our RLD in that area.
For example, but then the infrastructure that's not in place to solve it as well. So that can, I mean, that's ten projects in itself, right there, if not one. Housing, we talked about, I actually think. When I see the things that are happening with our housing. We feel pretty good on track with a lot, I mean, we're because of the compliments, right? The, we've got four hundred plus units coming in uptown. We've got these, at least, it appears to be, again, I don't know the numbers, I think, but tonight's project is an example for. A more affordable housing, and doing it in, but it's at a cost of. Valuable ag land, so how do we, it's balancing some of that, but I think in general, we are aligned minded, I guess. Where those things can and, and should happen in the town, I think it happens.
And, you know, the little modular homes that they built on maze landing. This side, town side of the Amex.
Yeah, behind the Amex.
They're listed for four hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars. Size, again, size is.
He's not saying that all year long.
Yeah, when that application was here, remember Mr. The old fellow?
I remember.
She was going to build, yeah, it was going to be two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I guess his house was going to be on the end.
Yeah, his house in the back, he was going to mow the, the grass, and then he died.
And then, was it originally at that intensity or?
Yeah.
I, I thought it was less, less houses.
Nope.
It's like ten, I think.
Ten, ten lots.
Tell me if I'm wrong, but what you. What the committee that you chair stated had nothing to do with needing more affordable housing, it had to do with. You know, like how the existing housing is being used. So, and there begs the question again of, does the community really want affordable housing? Nobody likes their house certain cost more unless they're getting ready to sell it. And then they want it to be as expensive as it can be, but does the community want that? Not my backyard.
Yeah, that was all, that was posted on candidate protocols. But they, yeah, they don't know where that site was, actually.
Well, not only that, but we expected them twice to come, come in in mass.
Yeah.
Numbers and. They did not.
Well, does the town want? The things that affordable housing put on, I was talking to the county executive development director. Ryan said basically housing is the biggest economic development issue, they're looking for development, personally asks, is there housing for employees? So. When you're talking about many residents that don't want affordable housing, they want jobs or stronger economy. How do you navigate those two?
And I think it probably gets headed off differently, and that's with the planner and the town manager, that their job is to look at. You probably. Ramp up the incentives towards the industrial lands that we want to develop that don't, which then pulls those other things. But in many of these cases, I'm not convinced that the community is asking for it, they're, they're buzzwords. I don't know, now we're getting philosophical.
Survey time, I'm for sure.
Going back to special projects, I would ask people to look, the, the next task that I would ask for is that we look at the comprehensive plan. Look at the things that we've been tasked to do, and then decide if you want to support those, and at some point, the chairman's like the dictation, he goes, what? I'm happy to have him do that. My soapbox tonight.
The, the, the one actually that we had regarding the. Site criteria manual and the complete streets and making sure we have pedestrian accessibility and all, that was, we sort of took care of that. To greater degree when we last updated the site design.
We did, yeah, so I, I checked that box and my head is done too.
Yeah, and that was my project, and, yeah, I, we, we got Jim and. MRB and everybody together and make sure that.
So I think that's great, I think that's basically what I was asking on uptown. In a meeting or two ago, when I said, do you guys want to enforce that? And.
The secondary street.
And everybody looked away from me. So. I think at that time, it was, I think you brought it up before, definitely, but at that point, in the, in the process, it was. It was late.
No, it wasn't, I asked for it and.
I know you asked for it early, I know you did. And continually. Because that, that and my incentive zoning, my incentive zoning got blown up and my complete streets got blown up. By that, there were, there were additional things on the environmental side that we booked for powering the. The alternative energies and the incentive zone that we submitted, and then they, then it carries through and then the complete streets.
Okay.
I think they still would have done it, because they needed sixty feet of pavement. But one of those wasn't going to pull the other two.
So that was your, your mantra, I heard that one. It, it all the way back to make, make sketch plan, remember when they came with sketch plan notes? Yeah, which streets, make sure we do.
I get on a mock server second. I know D E C has changed a lot of environmental rules.
Oh, yeah.
And a lot. I have somebody that runs a company in town that's willing to come talk to us about it, if that's something you want to hear. You know her, you know him. I'm happy to hear it, I mean, I.
Mike, Travis.
One of the things I heard, I heard about today is they're changing dockage. Is one of the things that.
That's D E C. Docking and more.
Sounds like there's some big changes coming there, but. I was not aware of.
You got to back your boot in rather than.
Changing the square footage for front edge and what you're allowed to do, but not only that, but what we're likely to see, as I was told today, is that temporary docks. Will require permits. This, this is all hearsay, if, then, then, then we're going to be required to potentially look at. And they're basically, it sounds like the motivation is that they'll have the same requirement as permanent dock. There's an awful lot of barges sitting out there doing stuff.
Yeah. Although the, under the premise of a temporary dock. Okay. Last thing I have is you got some training coming up. Blaine Federation has that Wednesday training here in the FLCC on seven eleven, you saw the. Note about if you want to tend to check with Tammy and she'll. Register you and the town will pay for the fee. MRB and Hancock continue their bootcamps. The next one is in June on the ZBA. Then there's a solar review in July.
Yes.
Chris, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. With that being said. Amanda's not here, who's filling in?
How are you guys going to end this meeting without Amanda?
Yeah, we'll have to keep it open.
Motion to adjourn, A O A. All in favor?
Have a good night.